So I'm gonna call the Mashpee School Committee meeting to order for January 8th, 2025. First item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, and our pledge is over there today. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mashpee Public Schools recognizes and honors the many generations of Wampanoag people who live and have sustained in this territory for more than 10,000 years. Next item of business is to ratify the agenda. Item five, the representative from the tribe has indicated that they will not be able to attend, so we should take that off the agenda.
Mr. Chair, can we postpone the first bullet point under item 11 until we have more of the committee present unless there's...
No, I would agree. Well, they meet monthly, so we would not have someone for February.
No.
Or January. For January, if that is the case.
But I mean, if you...
We can always change the appointment at any time.
Okay.
But I...
Okay, no, that's fine.
I do think it would be beneficial if we had all of us here. So at least, I think we should still have that discussion.
Okay.
Whether we actually act upon it, we'll see. Any other changes or comments on the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to ratify the agenda with the edit.
As amended?
As amended.
Okay. Do I have a second? So a motion by Kathy, and second by Kelly. Any other further discussion? Kathy, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Three ayes and two absences. Okay. Public comment? All right, I'm gonna take a minute then, out of that public comment time, to graciously thank on behalf of the school committee, the administration, the faculty, the students, the police department, the fire department, the DPW, and anyone else that was involved in the fire incident at Mashpee High School the other day. I think we were very fortunate with how little damage was incurred and how lucky we were to have it be, or have it happen on a school day when people were there versus on a weekend when people were not there. So I think everyone acted extremely professionally. I think parents did a great job in addressing the changes on spur of a moment to do pickup. I thank everyone here at Quashnet for accommodating a row of the rowdy crowd and...
They were very well behaved, I heard.
But they weren't quiet. I can't imagine that they were quiet.
Oh, no, no, no.
Right, so rowdy does...
Mr. Switzer said, "I'm going to say this, but your head's going, so I know you're not gonna listen." Like, you're not wrong.
I do feel sorry for the seniors. I think this is the second time in that you have occurred an incidence that has forced you not to go to school for a day or two.
Yeah, but they didn't give us the day off. I wouldn't have had to make it up.
We just couldn't, we just couldn't pay them. We was one day with you.
I know, exactly.
But I do appreciate, you know, obviously, the other building principals who have had to make adjustments in their programs to be able to support the athletics and the ongoing activities that currently are not able to be held at the high school, and I hope we'll return to some resemblance of normalcy soon. So, once again, I want to thank everyone, did a great job, and we really appreciate it. All right. Do I remember the timer on the public comment, probably?
You're the chair, you determine that time.
I didn't set my timer. Okay, next, next. It's gonna be one of those nights, guys.
It's okay, we're here for it, Tom.
Approval of the minutes from December 18th, 2014. It's terrible that we got minutes from last year.
December 18th, Tom.
December 18th.
December 18th.
Last year's minutes.
2024.
2024, last year.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of December 18th, 2024.
Second.
Any further comments? Hearing none, Kathy?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Any others? Thank you. All right. Next item of business.
You might need a microphone, so that the people at home can hear.
Student Advisory Committee.
Now you gotta move it, like, for the people, and it's gotta be like...
Hold up. Give me one second. No. Okay, so yes, it's been an interesting week. Did I think we were gonna have a fire in the school? I've always been like, oh, what happened? Would we ever have a fire to school? No, it's brick. I walked out of the school, I was like, that's smoke. Walked farther, that's a fire. Um, no, but genuinely, everyone was incredibly professional. They got the kids out of the cold so fast. I was in the, I saw the fires in the back of the school. They evacuated everyone, and then brought us, my mom was already texting me before I even knew I was going to Quashnet, "Come to Quashnet." I was like, sure. Uh, but yeah, they got us out of here, out of Quashnet too, extremely fast. They, I believe Mr. Switzer said, got everyone out at 10:58, which is two minutes before third grade goes to lunch. Um, so yeah, they did that incredibly well. It was very organized, very fast. Everyone was like, okay, let's get you guys home. Um, yeah, so Student Advisory Committee, I have updates on that. We had a meeting today, an information meeting, that was out of, there were 10 kids who did an interest form, and there were six kids who showed up, two had absences that they couldn't be there. So we hope to do next Thursday an election for them. I explained a little bit about the Student Advisory Committee, about how they would have to come to meetings, and how eventually one of them would have to take over my position. So we had a little bit of discussion on that. Some of them were not exactly thrilled that there were only two spots open and there wasn't more, and I was like, don't blame me, blame the law. So, yeah, it was a really good meeting. It was really nice to see a bunch of kids who were interested, and, yeah, trying to think, there's anything else I need to go over?
Can I ask a quick question on that?
Yeah.
So I know, I don't know if mine was one of the two. I know there, not, I'll talk to you about that later, but I know somebody had a club where no one was there to record something, so they went to that. But, the election, is that going to be school-wide? Like, how are you running, what is that looking like?
Don't know yet. That's a meeting for Friday. I have to talk to Ms. Lynch about that.
Okay.
So...
Just making sure there's enough time to, like, let people know, like, if you're saying the election's next week, is that enough time to let the rest of the student body know that there's going to be an election?
Yeah, I don't know exactly. I'm still trying to wrap my head around, my brain is in, like, five different places right now due to the five different things going on this week. So I'm still trying to figure out what's going on. I'll talk to her on Friday about what's gonna happen, who's gonna be on the ballot, that kind of stuff. So, but yeah.
Just curious how that, because that was, that's a quick turnaround.
No, absolutely.
How many seniors do you have right now at the Student Advisory Committee?
We have three.
Three. So next year, you'll have three openings, because you guys will all graduate.
Yes.
Maybe that's something, like you said, people are a little discouraged, because there was only two seats open?
Yeah, they've been told.
So guys, come back next year.
Yes. No, yeah, I told them, we have two seats open right now, but we will be in early May doing another election, and I'll be there for that too, to fully have them grasp the situation.
Another thought off of that is, tell the kids who don't get elected, have them come to a couple meetings to watch what you guys talk about. They might not be able to vote and participate, but they can at least listen, watch, learn, kind of, get them into the fold, so to speak.
Yeah.
Might be a way to, to do that as well.
Well, just a follow-up thought on that. So are your meetings publicized at school? Because they are open meetings.
Yeah, there was an email sent out to the student body, "If you're interested, please come," so...
If you're, well, that's, I think, interested in being on it versus interested in observing, that's two different things.
What, what did you...
He's making a differentiation between being interested and sending the email out for that meeting versus coming and watching, like, because they are technically open meetings, even though they don't necessarily have to post because they're under 18 and that stuff, like, technically, anybody from the student body should be able to attend the meetings and sit and observe.
The meetings here or the meetings...
The meetings they have, that the smaller group.
Yeah, they would...
So like, are they, he's asking if those meetings are posted for the student body to know, hey, the Student Advisory Committee is meeting on this day at this time at this location, or is it just sent to the Student Advisory Committee?
No, it went to everybody.
It went to everyone. There was an email, a mass email sent out, saying, here is two meetings that we are having.
All are welcome.
All are welcome.
And then after the election, you'll continue every time that that body meets?
Yeah, we gotta figure out meeting times and all that stuff, so...
All right. And the last question I have, and this is Julie probably for Kathy, is, I struggle with the fact that these are, in essence, elected positions for life versus being annual positions, where they'd be elected each year, so you don't have that issue of, oh gee, there's only two spots, or there's only gonna be three spots, that everyone would be up for elections, similar to how your other organizations work, where it's, every year it's open, so...
Well, if you'd like to propose an amendment to the general law...
Yeah.
Because the only one that's a year appointment is the chair. So the chair of the Student Advisory Committee is one year.
Right.
I understand your concern about the body of the committee, but I also think that we are still in our infancy with our Student Advisory Committee, and we are still building an understanding of what that committee does and what its function is. So I think that, at this point in time, because last year they were all hand-selected from a smaller body, they, we did not go through an election process last year, it was a, you're already on a student government thing, here, come be on the student government thing. I think this year we're getting closer to what it should be, and I am confident that with that type of turnout, that really, actually, you said 10 students expressed interest, and you had six show, and I know really seven would have shown, but, like, that, that to me says, and how many, do you know what the breakup of those students were?
Um, I know three of the kids today were from ninth grade. There are two of them who have expressed interest are from eighth, two from 10th, one from 11th. Does that equal 10?
There were three from 10th there, because Fernanda's here, and she told me who they were.
They were?
So there's three from 10th.
Okay. Oh, yes, there was three from 10th.
Math, math, you, plus one, so for...
I'm not thinking.
I was like, because Fernanda and I were chatting about it.
No, yes, that is correct.
So, I guess the point that I just wanted to clarify, it's not general law that is stating that each of the people have to be elected, it's only stating that the chair...
No. The committee has to be elected, but then the committee itself elects the chair.
Right.
But they don't put term limits on the committee, they only put term limits on the chair.
Right. So it's really, there's no law saying that we can't have annual elections for every represent, every person.
It is vague, so I suppose, no, there is nothing that says we can't, but there's also nothing that says we have to.
I did mention, yeah.
Part of me feels, and I would push back on it, on not allowing it to be, like, throughout high school, because I feel like the student that gets elected in ninth grade then has four years to kind of work on things, get an understanding, really build that knowledge. It's kind of like, you know, a term on school committee, you don't really get much done your first year, because you're still learning the ins and outs of what a school committee really does and trying to get your feet, whereas the second year, you're right, you have that understanding, you're able to kind of dig in and say, okay, now I really get it, I've watched, I've learned, I've listened. I think, you know, an annual election to shake it up every year, I think, is gonna lead to some issues personally, and I think that's why the law was written the way it was written, with just the chair being the annual election, and it doesn't have to be a senior who's elected. I mean, it can be anyone on the committee, so, I mean, typically, it's a junior or senior, because again, the thought is, they would have had a year or two on the committee to begin with, to understand the work of what the school committee and the student body is looking to achieve. So that's my only, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I guess I push back on that respectfully, because...
And I mentioned to the kids, like, you are elected for the rest of your high school career, but that does not mean that you need to stay on. If, like, you can step down, it's not required you stay on. If it gets too much, it's okay to stay, like, step down.
But you have to go through the end of your term, hopefully.
Yes, yes, but like, after a year, if you're like, this really isn't for me, you are allowed to step down.
But if they step down during the year, do you hold a special election, or are you guys just, in theory, appointing somebody?
I don't know.
Yeah, I think we're getting a little chew in the weeds on this, honestly.
So, so...
I'm just happy we're having an election and we had that much interest in it, and it sounds like we've got a good mix of representation, which makes me even more excited, so, full steam.
We can talk more about that at the next joint meeting, which, when is that scheduled?
That's the 29th.
29th.
That's why I'm trying to get them elected so quickly, because then we can have a meeting saying, okay, here's what's gonna happen, because I don't want them coming into it blind.
All right. Yeah, so, as soon as you're, you've got a draft agenda that you want to share?
I think she has to get, we gotta...
I have to get my elections and talk to my advisor.
Just putting it out there. Very good. All right. Anything else, any other questions, Eve? Excellent. All right. Next item of business is our public hearing, so I, I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for the interim superintendent's recommended fiscal year 2026 Mashpee Public Schools budget to be presented here at the Quashnet School Library during our school committee meeting on January 8th.
Do I have a second? Okay. Motion and a second? Any discussion? Hearing none? Kathy?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
How about yes? With that, we'll turn it over to Dr. Thompson, I guess. Yes?
Ready? We're ready. All right, so, thank you. This is the superintendent's recommended budget for 2026. I want to thank Ms. Lopes for all of her work in compiling all of these numbers and putting all of this together, so thank you. So first...
Can I just ask you to pause for one second?
Sure.
Are we able to angle that so that some of those people can see, if you want to see what's being presented on...
I mean, if you also want to move your chairs too, like...
Or you could move up to here to the side.
Might do both. Sorry, we're making y'all move tonight.
Do it.
That's good. All right.
Yeah, this, this will also be posted on the website after tomorrow. So basically, you know, Mashpee Public Schools has a lot to be proud of, learning experience to prepare students to be college, career, service, and civic-ready. Here we honor diversity, equity is provided, and inclusion is ensured, a community that greatly values education, a culture of excellence, kindness, and respect, focus on the whole child, classes taught by highly qualified teachers, district-wide multi-tiered system of support to ensure student success and progress, multi-age learning opportunities, strong and productive community partnerships, reminder that in 2021, we were a national equity and education award winner, no fees charged to students and families, which ensures that social economic issues are not a access issue, and of course, thanks to our dedicated staff here, a beautiful and well-maintained physical plant. So, quick overview of the 2026 budget. If you look, the superintendent's recommended budget is $20,095,093. That is an increase of $954,322.
You said 20, you said 20.
20 million.
That's 27, right?
Right, 27, sorry. $27,095,903, FY26. That is an increase of the bottom line, the base number of 954,322, or a 3.65% increase. When we look at the school choice offset, this year we are looking at using less, $701,071. We did use more last year, but that pool gets a little shallower if you use more money one year versus the next. So if you subtract that, then the FY26 budget reduces down to $26,394,832, and a overall increase of $1,210,479, or 4.81%. In that requested budget is capital improvement costs of a total of $130,485. If that is approved by the capital improvement committee, then that would drop our line once again to $26,064,347, and drop the increase to $1,129,994, for a grand total of 4.5% Just a reminder that we are in the final year of our strategic plan, we will be looking to improve and revise that going forward. We still have our portion of the graduate, and are still working towards those five critical skills that we want our graduates to leave Mashpee with. The budget timeline, in the spring, school committee established budget goals and priorities. FY26 budget is prepared by district leadership. Summer, fall, district finance, the finance working group reviews the superintendent's draft for the 26 budget. October 1, the superintendent's recommended budget is entered into munis, which is the town accounting system. October to December, the school committee reviews the FY26 superintendent's recommended budget. December 11, superintendent reviewed the 25 recommended budget, or actually, should it say 26 recommended budget with the town manager. December 27, FY26 recommended budget is published in the Mashpee Enterprise. All of that has occurred. January 8, FY26 superintendent's recommended budget public hearing. That's, all that is in black, because all that has happened. What is upcoming? January, to be determined, capital improvement program committee meeting. That's where we'll determine, find out if that, if our $130,000 worth of capital improvements is, is approved or not. January 22, school committee votes on the FY26 budget. January 23, school committee's recommended 26 budget is sent to the town manager. March date to be determined, school committee recommended 26 budget is presented to the finance committee, and May town, town meeting is May 5 of 2025. So what we're looking to, catch up on my notes here, what we're looking to, you know, these are the things that we feel that this budget accomplishes. It ensures that all of our legal and contractual mandates are met, it includes sufficient operating and capital funds to provide the current level of educational services to all Mashpee students, moves the district forward in meeting, meeting the increasing demands for technology and technology services of all of our, in all of our educational settings, updates to curriculum, addresses the increasing social emotional needs of our students in the form of staffing and programming, maintains the school choice program fund floor of $250,000, and that is to, as you know, to address emergencies and unanticipated expenses. It assumes ongoing practices, protocols to maintain facilities that are healthy, safe for our staff and students, are funded through the DPW operating budget for FY26 and beyond. Okay? Examples, you know, the, the MRF-13 filters, hand sanitizers, sanitizing wipes, disinfectant batteries, touch, you know, touch-free sinks and all the other sort of stuff. Revenue resources for total grants, we're looking, this year we had $802,385. We have budgeted $800,000. That is flatlined at this point, we don't see any, anticipate any increase there. School choice program funds projected to use $701,071. Town of Mashpee, what we're asking from the town is $26,394,832, and we are anticipating the same level, at least the same level of chapter 78, at $5,5,530. Any questions on those at this point?
What is the picture?
Louder?
What is the picture?
Um...
Is it just the National Junior Honor Society?
It's the National Junior Honor Society.
Yeah, hold on, I'm gonna...
Oh, there you go. All right, sharp.
So, just for clarification, if chapter 70 comes in, if we receive additional chapter 70 funds, where do those grow?
That, I don't know the history here, the...
Town of Mashpee.
Yeah.
To the general, to the general fund?
Yeah, chapter 70 money does go to the town. I'm not quite sure what the practice here in Mashpee is as far as allocating that, whether it all goes to schools or it just goes into the big pot.
Any addition above that goes to the big pot?
Yeah, so if there's more chapter 70 money, there'll be more in the, in the big pot. So, it usually does go up. I don't see a big shift in demographics that would cause a major swing at this point, but who knows?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, so looking at them, you know, by general categories, district administration looking at a 3.41% increase, change of above $45,245. Coombs School, I have notes, I keep not looking at it. Coombs School, an increase of 7.5 for a grand total of $238,251. Quashnet School, increase of $265,889, 6.64. A lot of those costs right there, and those two schools are ELA curriculum. Okay? Mashpee High School, there actually is a drop of $106,558. Curriculum and Technology, it's an increase of $178,738. Again, subscriptions and things along that length, they increase by a few percent every, every year, and that's what is represented there. Special education, increase of $31,832. That is actually, you know, a number based on our student population and what those needs will be. Athletics, there is not a significant change there, so zero percent's there. So total personnel is 3.16%. There are no new budget positions in this budget. Okay?
So, can you just elaborate on the staffing realignment?
Yeah, so what, so what happened is that positions were moved from the high school to the elementary schools last year, and this budget represents those, those movements. But overall, there is no additional staff in this budget.
So the $106,000 decrease at the high school, a lot of that is because of the realignment, correct?
Right.
And then that contributes to part of the increase at Coombs and Quashnet, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
The, we're still working through the additional program we had to add at the Coombs that is not in this budget. We might have to, you know, once we, once all the dust settles, we might have to look at some more school choice if we need to cover that, but otherwise, we're hoping that there'll be staffing adjustments we can make to cover that.
Go ahead, Karen.
So all of it, sorry, I'm just, I'm catching myself up there. Again, I'm like Eve, I've got 17,000 things going on in my head. So, the athletics budget for salaries is the coaches, correct?
Yes.
They don't get increases? Their, their salary stays the same every year?
Yeah.
No, so this, when we were in the working hall, you were talking about this. We have enough money in, already in the budget that will be able to cover the cost of all the coaches that, that's why...
Okay, thank you.
Right.
And the same thing with district administration?
Yes.
That's the percentage for their salary increases, correct?
Correct.
So I, I just want to clarify one thing. This budget includes or excludes the one and a half, or the FTE that we had to add here?
It excludes.
Excludes.
I thought we, okay.
No, we did, because we've not changed anything in the U.S. either, so this is the same budget that's being presented to the, that was presented to the town manager. At this time, it looks like we might have an increase of $97,000 in the sub-breaker route, and therefore, I can move that in the added district tuition line and put it into the salary line. So I think we have a net zero movement between the budget, salary side, and the operational added district tuition. So I think we have a net zero movement between the budget salary side and the operational out-of-district tuition.
So is the circuit breaker shown as part of the revenue?
It's not shown as revenue, but it's an offset to the overall budget in the budget detail.
So it's an expense offset, it's not revenue?
Correct.
That makes a lot of sense, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so this, so this personnel budget includes all of our contractual increases, projects for non-union contractual increases, as well as possible negotiations with units. So in this, when you look at the comparison between FY twenty-five and twenty-six, you can actually see that percentage, if you look at the Coombs School, it goes in fifteen percent of the total personnel budget to sixteen percent. Quashnet goes from nineteen to twenty percent, and the high school drops from thirty-four percent to thirty-two. So again, that, that realignment of staffing is, is what represents those, those budget lines that we just saw on the previous page. Operational, and this is where I misspoke before. But these are, you know, our supplies and things along that line, curriculum materials. District administration, we're not anticipating any increase in, for district administration and operational expenses. Coombs School, we're looking at a twenty thousand, seven hundred. That is, that is for an ELA curriculum. The Quashnet School is actually decreasing by four thousand, seven hundred and fifteen. Mashpee Middle School will decrease seven, nine thousand, seven sixty-seven. Curriculum Technology, that is going up by forty thousand, one forty-two. Special Education, we're anticipating about a thousand dollar increase in expenses for supplies and such. Out-of-district tuitions, and this is actually based on who is out and who we anticipate might go out. That is an increase of a hundred and thirty-three thousand, four eighty. Transportation, that is contractual, and that is an increase of a hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-two. Health Office, we don't anticipate needing more in the supply department there. Athletics, there's an increase in five thousand, eight hundred there, and that's just the increase of costs and supplies. You know, inflation is not just something we see in our homes, it's something that we see here. Other, we're not anticipating an increase there. So our total operating budget, and those are supplies and such, a five point four nine increase. If we take out, if we take out the school choice offset, and if capital improvement is approved, then that drops a little bit to two seventy-six, five ninety-seven in total for a five point nine two percent increase. And again, the difference there is, you know, the difference in the technology piece.
Is the calculation correct? Because before the offset, it's five forty-nine, and after the offset, it's five ninety-two? That is just a little contrarian to me, but who do, what do I know?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Question on the transportation line, does that amount still include the ever-needed, ever-sought late bus driver and training that we have been trying to acquire for?
Yes, it includes the late bus at the high school. We do not pay salaries for that, it's a contracted service, so there is a roof that's included in that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, thank you.
While we're on transportation, so is that, is that include, that's made up of two items, right? That's made up of increased bus driver costs and then an increase in fuel costs, right? We haven't purchased or, we're not purchasing any new buses? And are they, are they on a fixed fuel cost contract?
They have a contract that we have to pay the escalation, or we get a credit if there is a low rate projected in this contract.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Any other questions on this page?
One more?
Yep.
The out-of-district tuitions, I just, and I'm sure we've had this discussion. Now, is that for children, like, I, I know it's probably the tech, sturges, no?
No, that's, that's students going to the collaborative or another school outside of, outside of Mashpee.
Where services are needed typically that our district cannot.
So that covers, that hundred and thirty-three, some of that, some of that amount is increase in costs, because those costs go up every year. And I believe there is at least one or two other tuitions that might be in there.
So that's not a, like, a school choice? Like, if Mashpee, if Mashpee students decided they didn't want to go to Mashpee and they want to go to FALMeth?
No, that's, that's, that's a different, that's, that's the cherry sheets, that's a different.
Okay.
Yeah.
So did the, are we projecting the number of out-of-district students to be constant, or is it increasing?
From the October when we put it in?
Yeah.
Or we think we can stay with it and be not that we project it?
Okay. Is part, is part of the transportation also for out-of-district?
Yes.
Okay, so if that increases, that increases.
In the FALMeth, there's also the transportation.
The ELA curriculum, will we get, because you said that was also included in the personnel budget, and that's some sort of?
Yeah, I was looking, I was looking at the wrong, my wrong page of notes.
But it's just for the Coombs School, that ELA curriculum? It will not be coming to the Quashnet?
No, it's for all three, it's for both of the buildings.
Okay.
There was a one-time expenditure in FY twenty-five at Quashnet to upgrade the Vex robotics to the next generation. We took that out because it was one-time in nature, so the costs kind of offset themselves, that's why there's some reduction.
Okay, well, I guess I was, well, the Coombs School shows an increase, and he attributed, Dr. Thompson attributed that to the ELA curriculum? So I just wanted to, so you're saying that's offset though by the Vex robotics?
Right, so twenty-five, we had about twenty thousand dollars, and so we don't have an end-of-year function.
Okay.
Where do the AP test fees go? Which, which line item would that be?
We don't receive fees for AP tests.
Where do we pay them out of?
We pay them.
We pay them out of the high school.
Out of the three twenty there?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's where it is versus curriculum?
Yes.
It comes out of the high school, no?
Yes, because it's specific to the high school.
Okay.
So when I do the end of year report, because it's a specific expenditure to the high school, we report it because.
Okay, and how much is it?
Twenty-five thousand dollars, I believe is what we budget.
And that number obviously adjusts once you have a better idea of who's enrolled and what, and will be taking what courses.
Yes, and if we, we haven't been to a point where we cannot cover it, I actually put it into that line.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then the, you know, the, the next line shows the comparison from last year to this year. And just looking at the, I don't think that you can.
Can't tell.
Make that out from here. I don't know if you can in your packet. But one, one of the changes, out-of-district tuition going from twenty-one point nine percent to twenty-three point four percent. Special education, actually the costs in general dropping from two percent to one point nine. Curriculum and technology remains similar, four point one to four point two. And the other costs, I think we've, we've pretty much covered why they have increased. But again, you can kind of see that they are, they are keeping fairly consistent just based on the, on the pie graph. So the budget history, so this year we're looking at a, you know, a four point eight one percent. You know, and again, if we get the capital improvement, that drops down to four point five. Last year it was three point two. FY twenty-four, four point oh seven. FY twenty-three was a point four four, it was kind of an off year, and FY twenty-two, two point two nine. This, the increase that we're seeing in school budgets across the state and across the nation is pretty consistent. Part of that is based on increased student need, and part of that is based on personnel costs and supply costs increasing significantly over the last two or three years, so. So you can, you can see that, you know, FY twenty-one, that's kind of where the increase really kind of started. It has picked up between last year and this year. But tho- those lines are consistent, that, that's not just the Mashpee thing, that is statewide and that is nationwide. Student enrollment, and again, enrollment dropping off, less students, school-aged students in the state, in the country. That is consistent as well. And, you know, as I explained when we met with the town a couple of weeks ago, the, the, you know, people will ask, well, there's less students, why is it costing more? Not all of those students are coming from any one particular place, so you can't just reduce staff. Staff is the, is the largest part of our budget, about seventy-eight or eighty percent. So, you know, you can't have classes of forty kids, so it's really difficult to, to, to match those numbers up and still meet the student needs. And here we have the personnel budget. You can see that they're split up by, by school there. The total line is that blue line right there. Just to kind of quickly jump over to capital improvement. So this year we are asking for fifty thousand dollars for Chromebooks, thirty thousand dollars for wireless upgrades. Those that have children in the school or have been in the schools know that those are two foundational pieces that we need to do the daily work nowadays. Firewall replacement, this is a cybersecurity piece. If we don't do that, then it will cost us more later. And then about twenty thousand dollars worth of food service and kitchen equipment upgrades, that's, that's a separate ask away from the hundred and thirty thousand. And then for twenty-six, the, the DPW is looking for capital improvement around flooring replacement at all three schools, HVAC upgrades at the middle high school, and the Quashnet security camera, and digital video recording replacements, middle school, high school roof restoration, and Quash and Coombs access road engineering and design. So those are all on their ask list. Any other questions from the committee?
No question, but I think it'll be interesting to see the roof restoration after the fire because.
I said, does it make sense, honestly, to replace the roof and do the roof restoration before the HVAC upgrades are done?
We have to, yeah.
So since this is a public hearing, does our audience have any questions? They're happy?
They're good.
Still waiting, okay. Just nudge her if she starts to take a moment, okay? All right. Do I have a motion then to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
For a second?
Second.
First and a second, any comments?
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kathy, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And I vote yes, too, so thank you. I'm going to pass that, I can't have three.
All right.
All right. Next up is the report of the interim superintendent.
Yes, thank you very much.
Oh, wait, though, I'm sorry, the shareout, have you met with the town manager? There's a shareout of your presentation?
From back in?
December of twenty twenty-four.
I don't think there's been any change.
I'm sorry, what?
No.
Okay.
We have not forgotten the town manager after our meeting in December to see if there are any adjustments.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Sorry, I was looking, I was looking, I'm trying to, all right, sorry. All right, so the, so the first thing is, we've shared with you the Department of Ed's frequently asked questions or question and answers around the passage of question two, which was eliminating MCAS as a composite determination for graduation in the state of Massachusetts. Basically, what that results in is each district needing to come up with a policy methodology to prove that the, the competency in the subjects that are written into state law, and those are basically a competency in ninth and tenth grade English, a competency in algebra and geometry, a competency in a science, biology, chemistry, I'm forgetting the third one, Hope's not with me.
Physics.
Physics, thank you. So I wasn't sure if it was physics or physical science, but, so the requirement to show competency in those areas has not changed. What has changed, instead of having a statewide mechanism, the MCAS test, to show that or to demonstrate that, is gone. So we can no longer use that. Right now, we have one senior that we have to work with in one area for a competency piece. There are a few juniors, but we, the school committee will need to come up with a way of determining or a policy for determining what is competency. And this has raised a lot of conversation, there is a lot flying around from different districts. We do have a policy subcommittee meeting on the sixteenth. Before then, I will share kind of a composite of what other districts are doing. There's, so we might be in a position where we put together a policy through this year, and there might be some more guidance in the spring, so it might be the temporary policy, and then we look at a permanent policy. You know, the big question for me is, what is competency? Is it just passing? Is it a C? Is it a B minus? Is it, you know, some sort of local assessment that, you know, is it the final in those classes? So there's a lot of questions, and each district is trying to sort through that. There is a good amount of sharing of information between districts at the superintendent level, and I will share that with you. But this is the latest challenge, so. The way the law was written is that it came on in December and has been implemented, I believe it was the sixth, it was this past Monday. So even though there is a retest, you know, in March, that's great. It will be, it can be used for other things, like if you're out of state for the Adams Scholarship and that sort of thing, but it cannot by law be used for the competency determination. So that's kind of where we are right now, so.
And just to kind of add to that, MASCE has, and I don't know if you all are on the listserv as school committee members to get the emails, updates from MASCE, but there has been, there is quite an email chain that's been going pretty much since the election. Jason Fraser, who's the current president of MASCE, and was, and still is, well, he was the chair of the legislative committee as well. But the legislative committee has also been asked by state legislators, Desi, there is a working group that has been reaching out to MASCE to find out what MASCE's policy recommendation might be. It's also collecting information, like you said, from other school districts. But the email chain does have a lot of, our district's doing this, our district's doing, so like, the conversations are happening among school committees as well as superintendents, as well as legislators, as well as, like, so it's just, it's so, we've, yes, it passed in November, but it just, people are still trying to wrap their brains around it. And I think as it moves forward, I would not be surprised that we may see some kind of recommendation come from MASCE as a policy for us to adopt at our own district level, should we agree with what it presents. But again, it, you know, falling to us as a committee to determine what that, like, everything you just said is.
Yeah, I mean.
You know, with our team kind of saying, okay, this is what we want to say, is a competent graduate of Mashpee Public Schools. Then, you know, whether we use, we can't use the test as the be-all, end-all, doesn't, and then there's this whole debate of, well, can you use it as a piece? Can you, you know, can you incorporate some other type of assessment? And the conversation at the school committee level at MASCE has been interesting to follow. So again, if you're not on that listserv for those emails that you get every day, highly recommend getting on it because it's, you've got a lot of conversation happening on a lot of different levels of this question, so.
Yeah, so the, I mean, so the, you know, the, you know, the challenge is, and then, you know, the, the, oftentimes ballot, ballot initiatives are written without a full understanding of the complexity of the work. And this would probably be a textbook example, because the law passed in November, you know, the ballot question passed in November, came in, you know, was implemented in December, and activated in. and activated in, uh, in January, which is really not enough time to really do a dig down on how you're going to replace this, because the fundamental piece of the law of having to have those competencies determined is not changed, just the methodology for measuring it. So, there is a void, uh, and when we have a void in something as big as this, you're going to have different interpretations and different ideas. And you might see someplace say a sixty's and someplace say a seventy and someplace say a seventy-five, which was one of, one of the issues going forth. So, with that being said, it also gives some little more control over what that means going forward and what the, what things we should be looking at and maybe some revisions. And, you know, senior project maybe having a different sort of connotation to it or something along that line. There's a lot of different things to do. The other piece that is going to be a challenge is that, you know, if students did not pass the MCAS but were close, they could challenge and show other evidence. They'd get a state, uh, you know, the state would relook at it and make a decision. We probably need to have something along that line as well, so...
I mean, I have other questions too around, like, how do we then, like, MCAS data was almost a way to compare yourself to similar districts. And, and now I'm like, okay, if every, if every district's choosing their own, you know, determining factors, how do we then say, okay, well, Mashpee's performing at this rate in the state versus someone who is in a similar district somewhere else in the state? Like, we, we lose that in this, and we're not able to gauge our student, um, achievement accurately, you know, as accurately. Not that MCAS was the most accurate, but at least it was a set of data that we could take that one point in time, and now we've lost that one point in ti... I mean, we could still use the data again, the test isn't going away, it's just not used as competency, but...
Right.
How do you then make sure that your standards are the same as, you know, another school's district standards? And we're sending our kids to the same level or quality post-high school, you know, options in life?
Yeah, so...
You're not going to have that.
Yeah, well, well...
We don't have it today, because we have charter schools.
Well, yes.
Now, you're going to have everybody else's...
But at least the public schools were on a somewhat level, there was, there was some leveling measure there, and I feel like now we've lost that, so...
Well, just like David said, like, us in Mashpee, we could say, you know, a seventy-five is a passing grade where...
But our seventy-five might be found with eighty-five.
Right, or it could be Wareham sixty.
Right.
You don't know.
So, you don't know. So, I mean, it all kinds of depends.
Yeah.
That's going to be the tough part.
So, my quick take on this is, um, we have one person that this really is a critical decision.
Yeah, and they've, and they've only got one, one, one thing to do, so it's, it's, we're in a... And again, people have worked hard with our kids. It's not unusual just to have a handful that we're working with, which is really good. And we, we will do that, so...
Well, I, I'm grateful that we're in that situation, but I guess my point is, so, we as a committee need to come up with a policy...
Yeah.
Sooner versus later, because that one person will not graduate from Mashpee without that policy in place.
So, we will probably have at least some quick version, hopefully for the twenty-second, because he... Because it might mean that that student might need to change their courses for the spring.
Right.
So, this is...
So, the sooner we can...
Again, coming up, we can come up with a temporary policy.
A policy just for the class of twenty twenty-five.
And then come back and choose you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Just wanted to mentally understand the, the critical timeline that we're under.
Yeah, so to get, so, so, again, I'll, I'll back to the timeline. It passes November, you know, the beginning of November. Comes, two, two months later, everyone is scrambling, you know, basically by the end of, end of January, the second term ends, and if you have to make some sort of, you know, class adjustment, schedule adjustment, enrollment adjustment, you know, you don't have a lot of time between then and May. You only have, you have less than, you have less than four months. So, not only is it difficult for districts, it's somewhat confusing and difficult for children who are in this situation where there is a void, so...
Yeah.
And just one, one last thing on this. The MCAS is, is not going away, it is part of federal law. No Child Left Behind, or as we jokingly called it once upon a time, No, No Child Left Untested, is still in place. Those tests are still happening, and, you know, that's still what accountability and, and the ranking of school districts are going to be. And we do need kids to, don't need kids freaking out or losing sleep, but just come in and do the best you can. That's all we're asking, so... With that, I'm going to switch over a little bit to our fire situation. Again, you know, as I communicated with, with families, our, our emergency plans were well implemented. Everything went swimmingly, well, I wouldn't say swimmingly, but went very well. You know, we were able to evacuate the building quickly, efficiently. Our students were absolutely incredible, our staff were absolutely incredible. It was a cold day. We put them on the buses to keep them warm, quickly determined we were not going to be going back into the building in a timely fashion, so we moved over here to Quashnet. Once we got here, we got the call from, uh, the fire department, the fire chief, chief pallbearer, who said, yeah, we're not coming back today, and we shifted to an early dismissal. A lot of teamwork, um, and, you know, a lot of communication that went very well. And we've already thanked, you know, the Mashpee Fire Department was there very quickly. The Mashpee Police Department closed off, uh, the roads, um, helped us do crowd control. You know, the, the, you know, the DPW were there, you know, cleaning. They got the Quashnet ready for the kids to come over from the high school, quickity quick. I do have to mention, uh, so, the high school staff smelled a smell. They called our Buildings and Ground DPW director, um, and Brad Tripp was, was here investigating. He's the one who discovered the fire and pulled the, pulled the alarm probably about twenty minutes faster than the alarm probably would have gone off, which saved us some roof and some damage. Currently, um, Chair Myers and, and Committee Member Rodriguez were with me yesterday. We did a quick walkthrough, um, at the high school. We are, the damage seemingly seems to be well-contained and minimal. We are hoping that this will be a quick turnaround to be able to get our gym back. And again, team effort. It was really an incredible opportunity, it's one I would trade to not have. But, um, you know, the fire and the police departments and the, and the chiefs were just absolutely amazing, as was, um, our, our DPW partners. They had the insurance adjustment there, the cleanup crew that afternoon, we walked the building, and that was started Monday afternoon, Monday evening, so...
Can I ask you a question?
You can.
How, how was Mr. Myers and Dan, and Mr. Rodriguez notified that you were doing a walkthrough? Or is that just something...
Uh, they asked, they asked to go in as a chart.
And why wasn't that communicated to the rest of the committee?
It was just a request, and we, we can walk through tomorrow if you want.
I would have liked to walk through and see what it looked like, because, um, you know, not for nothing, I was told at seven-thirty in the morning that something in the main office popped. The lights flickered, they made a phone call and got no answer. So, I would like to get to the bottom of that, of what happened then. They heard something pop, they heard a noise like a bang, the lights all flickered, and then they tried to make a phone call, but nobody answered their phone.
That's not what, well, we are, so, tom, uh, Friday, we are doing a full incident redo, uh, review, where we will sit with fire and police and the, um, high school administration and go through our response and see if there's any holes or things that, you know, we need to do better. But that, I, I, that is the first that I have heard of that, so... And that includes talking to the assistant principals, so...
Are they there at seven-thirty in the morning? Yes.
Yeah.
Sorry, I jumped right back.
No, you're fine. Like I said, we hear things, and I just want to get to the bottom of it, honestly. You know, not that...
They can certainly give you an update next month?
Not that, not that, it honestly could have been avoided, stuff happens.
Right.
But again, when was the last inspection done on those units? When was, you know, that type of stuff? Is it something that could have been avoided?
There's going to be a full investigation from the insurance company as well about the unit. So, now that they're, are clean up, and it's now a safe place for them to go do that investigation, they'll be doing it, and we'll be updating that information.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so there is, I mean, so there's several different pieces of this. You know, the first is, you know, the discovery of the fire, the, the alarm, the response, the evacuation. There's, you know, how, how that went, and on our review with police and fire as to how that went, okay, to make sure there's not anything that we could plan to do better the next time. The other piece is the insurance and, and the fire investigation. So, we will, we will eventually hear about those. Those are not things that we necessarily are, are, are conducting ourselves, but...
The way that the situation was handled, evacuating the kids, getting them out from the time that, you know, the first, the first kid put on Facebook, there's a fire in the gym, to the time that you responded to families, was thirteen minutes. I don't think we, as a school committee, can ask for a better response time.
Yeah.
I mean, like I had talked to you about, I don't know of any other ways. I mean, a reverse nine-one-one call to everybody's parents, I think, would have just caused panic. And then you would have ended up with everybody pulling into the high school or pulling into Quashnet. So, that may not be the best solution, but not for nothing, for people who wanted to complain that they didn't get notified fast enough, you are not faster than their sixteen-year-old kid that's standing outside with a cellphone.
Yeah, and just...
So, that was an incredible response time, and thank you very much for sending that information out. You know, certain people, I'm sure, were aware faster than others just because of, of what happens, you know? I don't know how the news got there so fast, I think they were kind of mad that we kind of got out there too quickly and they couldn't interview anybody.
Do you want me to tell myself?
It was quite hilarious.
Plausible deniability.
But, it's just, it's, it's one of those things. So, you know, we look at what we did, you give props to the people who deserves props for doing it. Not for nothing, the, the fact that we had, what is there, six-hundred-and-twenty students at the high school? That we got six-hundred-and-twenty students into this elementary school, and they behaved.
And the staff.
And the staff. So, there's what, a hundred-and-twenty? So, there was like, there's, there's like eight-hundred people extra that we got into the school.
Right, and, and still ran a, a normal day here.
And they weren't disrupted.
Nope.
You know, the kids were all excited, like I was telling Eve the other day, because Mr. Switzer had said to them, hey, we had an incident at the high school, just want everybody to know. You know, the high school kids are coming over, and they all stood in the windows and watched all the buses go by. They thought it was the coolest thing in the world. Again, they, they're from third to sixth grade. Anything that kind of goes by the window is exciting to them. So, it's just, it's, it's, it's very heartwarming to know that, like I've said before, like, this community is amazing. The things that we do for each other and for our kids is amazing. And the whole, more people need to see that. So, thank you guys very much.
And, and I, and I do want to follow up on, on the social media piece. So, our priority is to make sure that all of those, the students and the staff get out of the building safely and are accounted for. So, that, that is job one. If a student walks out and texts their parent that they're being evacuated, there's, that is not the priority. Those at home should know, there will be a communication from this administration, and they need to be patient. Facebook should not be your primary source of information about the schools. We have a communication plan, we have a communication strategy, we have communication tools, and we will use them. All right, please be patient, take it with a grain of salt. There's no way in heck we are going to out, outpace some fifteen-year-old who texts a parent and puts it on Facebook. Because our priority is the safety and accounting for our students and staff, so...
I just want to say thank you for, I think my wife's phone is died, so I will talk very loudly. I just want to say thank you for reiterating that. As a parent, as a student in that school, I feel that you handled it. Textbook, I mean, everybody practices the evacuation. Those next steps, though, you don't get to practice. So, from my standpoint, as a parent and as a committee member here, watched the whole, you know, had the kid texting, same thing, you know? Also seen kid caught incidents who, I heard, I don't know, I heard something about a Mustang that was circling the building and almost hit a teacher. I don't know. Great stories are coming out, but I, I feel very, um, comfortable with the competency of which you and the administration, all of you, handled it. I think the students, you and staff and faculty who were involved, you couldn't have done better. So, thank you for, you know, again, prioritizing safety first, because, yeah, people, things are replaceable, people aren't.
Right.
So, if you're getting a text from your kid or you're on Facebook and you're like checking to see if the school's texting you yet, they might be looking for people.
Right.
So, I appreciate the focus on the people that are irreplaceable versus the things that are replaceable, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And I, I will say, I walked out, and the fire, from when I first saw it, threw larger acid than on, but they got us out, and you could barely see the flames from the vacuum. So, it had only been going for not that long. And even, like, I was, I did text my mom, I was like, just see him out there, it's fire at school, I'm fine, okay. So, her concern was like, oh, great, that's not a great thing. My dad was like, where are you going? But, no, it was a very, very fast. We were, I think it was nine fifteen when I first sent the text to my parents. I was out of Quashnet by ten forty-five.
Lily was home by ten fifteen, so...
Yeah. I was like, okay. So, I was twelve.
Yeah.
I was, like, there were kids, everyone was trying to find ways to get out. Parents, I think, were coming up to Quashnet being like, hey, can we get our kids? And Mr. Switzer was like, hold up.
Mr. Switzer didn't do as much as you're giving Mr. Switzer. I just want to put that out there. It was actually Lili and Mr. Markaryan. I don't know if they got props while I was on, but they were phenomenal. And so, I just want to make sure that publicly has been said, because they really stepped up and did a phenomenal job.
I'd ask for a better job.
It is, and it's teamwork.
Yeah.
You know, it really is teamwork.
Yeah.
You know, one hand washes the other, and we all work together, and we get stuff accomplished. And that's what makes us great, honestly.
Mr. Switzer, no, no, Mr. Markaryan, I saw him last video today, I was like, can you see it all? Normally, I see all my hair, but he's not seeing it. He's like, oh, I got eleven thousand steps by the morning. So proud and stuff, he's like, not for a good reason, but I got eleven thousand steps. So, but they all were, okay, here, here, bam, bam, bam. I was just being like thrown by the PR team, but I'm just going to go, it was like a pinball game. So, you're going to go with it, and they got everyone out, so...
This is why we do fight.
Yeah, well, yeah, and...
All right. I just want to make a, um, a comment. So, in regard to, um, Dan and I and the superintendent actually doing a, a brief walkthrough, we'll, we'll work better to make sure that if there are future events, that everyone is made aware that that's going to happen. We'll have to break it down into two-person groups because of, um, we can't have a meeting of four.
But, but we can all be, I don't, that's the point, I look, so we can't go and do like a walkthrough of something?
It could be posted as a walkthrough.
I was just going to say, but we're all, we're all at graduation. So, technically, if we're all, I mean, it's not like we're having a meeting. We're, we're doing an incident of what, something that happened at the school.
We can talk about that at a later date, though I think if we can move...
Yeah. But, but anyway, so, I just wanted to, you know, my observation, a lot of, um, ceiling panels were water damaged in the athletic, um, dressing room areas.
Yeah.
And those were, had been removed and, uh, being replaced. The cleaning crew was doing a fabulous job wiping down everything. You know, the, most of the water looked like stayed in the dressing room area, and, and very little went into the gymnasium.
Well, that was my concern, with all the money we just spent on that floor in that gym. Was it sealed properly so that water doesn't, didn't seep underneath it?
So, it looked like, from what we saw, there may have been a little bit underneath the bleacher. That was it.
And they're going to evaluate that, but the data's coming in, it's going to just go underneath and see what kind of water is standing there and kind of...
Yeah, but, you know, the biggest takeaway, it smelled like someone had a campfire in the gymnasium. Had a very smoky smell, and they had air cleaners in there.
Did anybody bring marshmallows?
We weren't invited, apparently.
The smell is pretty much out, it's only really in the cafeteria, you know?
Right.
And you could barely, it was only in cafeteria, it's dangerous.
Right.
I mean, when we walked out from the gym to the cafeteria area, it smelled two-hundred percent better.
Yeah.
And what's the, what's the timeline of reopening the athletic room? Do we know yet?
Not for sure. We're hoping that next week, but that, you know, and again, it depends on what's found.
Okay.
Do, do, do they have to do something under the floor, because there's standing water in that?
Okay.
So, as you open it up and start, right... So, as you open it up and start, right, so, but seemingly, it was about as minimal as it could be.
I mean, if you went in there today, other than missing ceiling tiles.
You wouldn't be in there.
Yep.
You wouldn't know.
Were the kids all able to get into the locker room to get their stuff for sports?
Yeah, they were all escorted to, that part of the building was cordoned off.
Yeah.
So, they had to be escorted, so we had to, and we told, we told the high school kids that Monday night, that they.
Yeah, Bonnie had sent out an email stating all of that stuff.
That there would be time to get their things that they had to leave, and that we would arrange for the athletes to get into the locker room.
They go three o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, and we're working, you know, with the Quash administration about practices here and that sort of thing, so we're not.
I think the whole town has pretty much shifted everything, so, between the schools, the rec department, our travel leagues, everybody is kind of working together and shifting everything around to help, you know, the middle high school kids.
Right.
Like, this is a catastrophe.
Yep.
You know, that type of stuff, so. Everybody understands, everybody, you know, my kids loved practicing basketball yesterday at Coombs because they would rather climb the rock wall than play basketball. You know, you have to reconnect them and say, hey, that's not what we're here for. But, again, they're in sixth grade, they haven't been in Coombs in how many years now?
Right.
So, it was kind of like a reminiscent, they didn't even remember where the bathroom was, it was quite funny. So, it's just the fact that the whole town kind of is working together to shift things to make sure that our kids can continue to have the most normal experience they can during their winter sports season is amazing.
Yep, so hopefully, hopefully, everything will be back to normal by this time next week.
Now, be quiet so we can move on.
They have all the practices and everything.
Yeah.
Yep.
They're back with all the contractors, they're really being effective, it's now just a game of, let's find Nick. Where is Nick today?
All right, so, in your packet, you have the enrollment report, the December, total students for December is fourteen oh eight, and we did add one school choice person as well this past week, so that is reflected in those numbers. Looking at personnel update, you can see that we did have Phil, the biology resignation, paraprofessional at the Coombs School, and we have a long-term substitute coming in at the Coombs School as well. We're still looking for one paraprofessional at the Coombs and a special ed teacher at the Coombs.
Isn't there another new paraprofessional at the high school?
I, yes, that, I think that was covered last month.
Last month, okay.
And that was a shift of someone in another position into that position, and where someone else will be coming in to take over that. That'll be in the, probably, next personnel update.
Okay.
Are the unfilled ones, the ones that were newly added?
Um, I think, I think these, we had people move from existing positions into the new position, and these are the ones that shifted from the old position.
Okay, so this is backfill.
Yeah, so we're backfilling.
But, it's really the new position.
Yes. Yes, but no. How's that?
I got it.
Yeah. All right, and then, and then we do have one person leaving us, very sad about this.
Oh.
Years of, nine years of dedicated service to Mashpee. I want to thank her for her lasting.
Oh, my God.
Lasting impact on teaching and learning here in the district. The Collaborative is getting.
Get up.
Is getting an incredible leader, and we all know that you are going to do incredible work there for all of our students across the Cape. And I personally want to thank you for all your help and support and assistance. These last five years, because I don't know, what am I gonna do without you now? Who's gonna be in charge? Who's gonna keep?
Oh, come on. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. This is so nice, thank you. Very thoughtful.
And, and.
Are you serious?
Oh, yeah.
Was it like my birthday or something?
Well, you know, we figured if you need one for the office, one for home, you could split them, you could have one in the bathroom, one in the kitchen, you know, whatever works.
Thank you. It's been a true honor to work with Mayor Mashpee in my home, in my community, with all of your children and mine. I am very grateful to continue my work with you all in my role at the Collaborative because we've got more to do.
Yep.
We'll see you at legislative breakfast on January twenty-fourth, in case you're wondering.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so, so this is Hope's last school committee meeting, which is why we wanted to do this now. We are gonna make her, and, you know, come around next week, but after that, next week will be her last week in district, so.
So, I just wanted to say, it's been a great, great ride, because I was here when you first started, and I recall advocating to bring you in, because I was excited about your enthusiasm, about your knowledge set, your expertise, particularly in special education, and you have contributed so much to this district over the past years. Sometimes we agree, sometimes we don't agree, but at the end of the day, we still are friends, and that's the most important part of it. And, you know, I think this is a great opportunity for you to continue to grow and develop, and someday, when you become a big person.
Remember the little people.
Now, who knows where you're going to be? You may be sitting up there in Boston, running the whole show.
She could join us on this side of the table now.
Well, she could do that, Nick.
Just saying. You never know.
You never know where your paths will lead, but I think this is, you know, I feel very proud of what you've done and what you've been able to contribute here to Mashpee, and I think you're gonna do even greater things there at the Collaborative, and, you know, you will never forget where you came from, that's for sure. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm just gonna echo it. It's a great loss. We got some big shoes to fill. So, I mean, your dedication to our students, your candor and wealth of knowledge will be greatly, greatly missed, and like Dawn said, I wish you nothing but the best, and I know that you're gonna just excel at this next step of your career and stage, and you're gonna keep helping kids, which is, I think, your passion and you're, you're just, you're very good at what you do, and they're very lucky to have you join their team, so. But, like I said, we'll still see you, and we'll still be interacting with you, so, you know, and I'll see you at all of the band concerts still.
Next Tuesday.
Unfortunately, no. Well, it's okay. But, again, best of luck, and you're dead to us now.
Thanks. Okay, it's my turn. I'm gonna be a little sappy. So, only, I've only been here for six months, but you were the first person, Mary-Kate's not here, so I can't say you learned from her. But, you were the first person that helped me differentiate that I was a mom first and to look out for my child, because I was very scared as, in a position that I'm in, to open my mouth and advocate for him. So, I want to thank you for being a friend and being a fellow mother. I don't have to say goodbye.
No.
Because I'm gonna be sitting at the table with you. Your positivity and your enthusiasm that you portray on a daily basis is what is going to help push you to the top. So, congratulations, no tears. And I'll see you soon. Carol, okay, it's not on my bingo card, no fire this week and no crying at school committee. None of those things are on my card. Just know that you have touched the town of Mashpee in ways that, you know, people are going to remember. Thanks. Here, well. Thanks to the community, and mostly to the kids, because you're a basketball jam. But, no, I appreciate every opportunity I've had and the chance to work with some of the most amazing people that I've ever, ever known, and like I said, that will be continuing just on a bigger scale through the collaborative, so. Y'all have my cellphone, you hit me up anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, and then also, your packet is the athletic update. You can see the upcoming home games, or might, you might want to check.
Twitter.
Check, because some of those are changing, depending on how long our gym is out of order. You also have the outreach, we are Mashpee Report, and Mrs. Carol is scheduled to come at our next meeting, so you had asked her to come, but I would love to get some things you would like her to speak to. So, I don't know if you want to share them now, or if you want to send me a text or something along that line.
Did you ever get a job description?
Uh, I don't.
We have a job.
We have a job description, it's how old it is.
No, it's, the job didn't exist before that, so it's.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, we asked for one. We did ask for one.
I don't remember asking for that last time, but.
We asked for one at our last meeting.
I don't remember that, so I'm sorry. But, I'm, I think if you want to look at it, that's fine. I know we talked about job descriptions, I just didn't remember asking.
And I think, I think the answer was, that's one of the ones we're working on. What? No, we have one.
No.
Sorry, I'm not trying to be, but I just know we wrote it, so.
Either way, we'll have it for next meeting.
Definitely.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to email you. I think if we email you, that probably is a better time.
Yep, okay. And then, the last thing is obviously the upcoming events. I would like to point out the second bullet on the second row for Thursday, that's tomorrow, the hour, coffee hour with the interim superintendent, which will be at the library. So, anyone available, we've put that out several times, love to have some company. It's a lot of coffee to drink by yourselves, folks, so I need some help. So, please stop by, it'd be great to have some informal conversations and some meet and greet. And that's it from me. For now.
Turn it over to the Director of Finance.
In your faculty report, I did not receive any questions before, but we don't feel any questions at this time. My next item on here is the CIP update. I have not heard any get word from all over the country of CIP boards I have this issue in the community. My final update is the H-Track update. I do not have a lot of new information from our last meeting, but we are meeting with the design and engineering team to get an estimate review tomorrow, so I'll have more information on that.
Thank you.
All right. Negotiation Subcommittee, we had a meeting, our second meeting last night with Unit C, where we exchanged new, or, we received new proposals from Unit C, and we are in the process of reviewing those. So, we have another meeting in two weeks. So, that's progressing. All right. Specified, specific assigned and unassigned business, Mashpee Inclusion and Diversity Committee. So, when is the next meeting?
It's the Tuesday before your next school committee meeting.
The twenty-first.
Yeah. You could have the chair just go as a representative until you have the twenty-second meeting?
What time is it?
Oh, you can go, sorry. It's at five. Hold on. Is it five or five-thirty? I think it's five-thirty.
I thought it was five.
No, it's five, it's five, it's five.
I thought they started.
What was it, the January what? January twenty-first. Yeah, they start at five, it's at town hall. It's over at six also, it's a hard stop at six.
Ironically, yes, I saw that. They just stop.
They just stop.
And they're not dealing with those big issues, those educational challenges.
What day is that? It's a Tuesday. Oh, I freaking.
So, unfortunately, Tuesday, since it's negotiation, it takes me off the table, takes Brian off the table.
The only one left of Dean, because I can't do the even basketball.
Well, shoot.
Hi, work Tuesday nights.
Because of the negotiation, that takes all the administrative.
Honestly, if we miss one month, is it really gonna be the end of the world? I don't mean to say, like, we're not going to appoint someone, I'm just saying, clearly we have someone who has a parental obligation, we have negotiation Subcommittee, and we have another person who's not even here that we can't really speak for. Unless Dr. Thompson would like to have another meeting, which I'm hesitant to say, like, do that, but it just, to me, doesn't seem right.
Well, seeing that I'm on negotiations too, because I did.
Never mind, then there's that.
Right, because I did, because I did offer.
Yeah, so, to me, I.
Because there's no one left.
There's no one left.
I feel like we need to let it go a month, let them know that, I'm not saying we won't fill it, I'm just.
You can check and see if Dan is free, and if he is, send him as a representative. If he's not, yeah.
I will check with Dan, see if he, if that will fit in his schedule to go.
Just the one.
Just the one meeting.
Just one meeting.
Yeah, as, you know, a interim representative for us, and then he can bring us back at the twenty-second meeting, and hopefully, we'll have everybody here and be able to have a more fruitful conversation. And if Dan's not available, I will let.
Moreno.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Fair enough. All right, affirmative Superintendent Search Process update.
We had our first set of interviews on Monday night. We interviewed three candidates. Tomorrow night, we interviewed three more, and on Monday, the thirteenth, we will interview the final two. The thought is, on Monday, we hope to, by that point, have a discussion and provide the committee with a transmittal of recommendations after that meeting for finalist interviews to tentatively be on the fif, sixteenth, seventeenth, and twenty-second.
Twenty-second, yeah.
If needed, if not needed, depending on who those finalists ends up being, there, you know, and how things shake out, we don't know, so we may need a third. We're waiting to see, so obviously, we got through the first three, we've got five more to go, and that's where we're at.
All right, so, in regard, I had a conversation earlier this afternoon with Glenn Kuscher, talking about, and Kathy, full disclosure, Kathy and I had a brief discussion in regard to the site visits of, if we had to have site visits, how would that process kind of work?
Would they be full day, just to clarify, should they be full day?
Yeah, we had that discussion, we were talking about that.
Yeah, so, full day, half-day. So, I did draft up for the committee's review and for.
Well, it's labeled confidential, so, yeah, I'm a little curious why, like, handing out.
Well, yeah, I.
Handing out confidential information at a public meeting kind of makes it public at that point.
It has to be, because.
No, I understand.
I just, I.
Who are we giving this to?
Give it to David. Unfortunately, I don't have another copy.
No, I was just gonna have Sherry, because she keeps the minutes.
Okay, well, I'll give her one, because I'm sure this is gonna get marked up. I don't expect it to be final. So, Kathy, Kathy and I had talked about a half-day kind of agenda. I talked to Glenn about it, got some ideas from him. So, one, one option, and this is just a working draft, so please chime in, would be that we would have the candidate arrive at central office, be greeted by school committee members, I will try to be there, I think Kathy was going to try.
We said at least two, is what we were thinking, at least two.
It doesn't have, and it doesn't have to be the same two every day, if we have multiple days.
Can we have more than two?
If we have more than two, we will have to post it, which is fine, it's not gonna be a meeting, but we would want to, just for transparency's sake.
Yeah.
Do a posting that school committee members will be participating in, you know, it's still, you know, it wouldn't be like open to the public, but more just a, there will
Notification to.
There will be a quorum of committee members at this time conducting business. As long as it's posted, that keeps us above the open meeting law requirement, so if we know that there's going to be three, we should make sure that we tell Ms. Menetski in time for her to get the posting to Town Hall, just to cover the open meeting law basis.
And not, I would, I would assume, the others may not agree, there's only three of us here, that there will be three or more people that would want to do this. That's just an assumption, so.
Let's go through the agenda, and let's just park that for a second, okay?
Okay.
Park that thought. Because there are opportunities, and there are places where it may not make sense, so. So candidate A, I'll just use that, candidate A arrives at Central Office, greeted by school committee members and obviously administration. And then they would have 45 minutes to meet with the Central Office staff and administration here at Central Office. From there, then they would go to the high school to meet with Principal Brady and her staff, and then Principal Brady or a designee, because I don't know who it would necessarily be, if she's not available, would do, would escort candidate A around to show them the building and the operations. And they would have approximately an hour to do that. That would conclude at 2 o'clock, and they would go to Casey Coombs, where they would meet with Principal O'Brien and her staff, and similarly, would do a walk-through, and the opportunity to meet with and see some of the staff and kids. From there, they would come back over here to Quashnet, looks like that's misspelled, meet with Principal Switzer, and his staff, and then do a tour of the building, promptly to be finished by 3:45, because your dismissal starts promptly at 3:50 here, correct?
No, dismissal's at 3:35.
3:35.
It's 2:50 and 3:35.
Okay, so I was off a few minutes. Okay, so we'll have to adjust that so it finishes at 3:35? So at 3:30?
Yeah, 3:30 is dismissal.
So we'll have to figure out how to.
I'm thinking that the site, the actual building tours may be a little.
Shorter.
Chunky.
Yeah, and that's fine. Like I said, this is a working draft. Since they would be here, then the plan is, they would be handed off to Glenn?
M A S C, not M A S S.
Oh, M A S. You know where my mind goes. Okay. Who would oversee a public forum here in, hopefully, the library? Although I don't know if there's something else going on those days here in the library and Quashnet. So we would have to, but, but since they would be at Quashnet and the theory is they just transition from the site visit into a public forum, that's, anyone is available and, or is open to anyone who wants to come and meet with the prospective candidate. So if they, you know, if a faculty didn't get a chance to meet them, they could come here and meet them, okay? That would run until approximately 5:15. Then Glenn was volunteered to escort them to dinner.
Well, yeah.
Escort them, not us.
Them.
We're not them.
We are not them.
We're not them.
He's bringing them together.
Once he figures out where Mashpee Commons is to.
I think we can give some good restaurant information.
Plenty of options.
Plenty, plenty of options over there. Now I'll give them about an hour to get something to eat and get a little bit of a breather before then coming back and meeting with the school committee at 6:30. Glenn said, well, mate, you, you know, you could do seven, but, you know, I don't think we want to go past 6:30. I think 6:30 gives the parents and family and everyone who has things that they have to do right after work, time to take care of that. And students who want to get their homework done before they come and watch this, they can do it, so. That's, any, any thought, any more thoughts?
I have questions.
More questions?
Musical chairs.
Yep. So, so you would be.
Yeah, you're part of the school committee, yes.
Well, you, okay.
She can't vote.
You can be part of them if you are available. Don't, you know, don't feel, I want to kind of say something about how many of us are there, I guess, so, but I think you would be beneficial to be at the walkthroughs. Or, or other student rep advise, like, you as the chair, but if another advisory committee member wanted to do it, be a great chance for them to, you know, be a part too, or.
It will depend on my schedule, because basically all my thoughts that I've missed have stuck for one, so it'll depend on what it will look like in what I'm saying.
And like I said, the public forum in the afternoon, if we finish up earlier, that could start earlier and extend longer, if necessary. If people from the high schools didn't have a chance, they could have that opportunity too.
I'm just, I completely forgot, I was, my brain's on like this, it's just great, isn't it? So they have Chief Iver wanting to come, we have interviews on the 15th, 16th, and 17th, 22nd?
16th, 17th, and 22nd.
22nd with the finalists.
Correct.
Right.
Is the 22nd the next school?
Yes, it is.
It would be.
Dawn and I talked about that.
We would, we would carve out part of our meeting for that.
We'd probably lighten the agenda a little for the 22nd. If it's not already.
But it, but that particular part would start at 6:30. So our meeting would start at 5:30, we go through stuff, and whatever we got, at 6:30, we stop. Okay?
Okay. Yeah, I'll note that in my calendar, I will let people know I can not be here.
But, but that'll get finalized, I think, next week. Not, probably Tuesday.
Probably Monday.
Well, yeah, Tuesday, when Glenn can go, yeah. Sorry.
Right, you guys, once you guys figure it out, then he has to confirm.
Yes, yes.
Okay?
He would need to confirm with the finals.
Right, so I'm, I'm projecting that we won't know till Tuesday. Then that means, I think this is, 16th is Wednesday?
Yes.
Right, so you basically have one day, so that's why we, we asked last month for everyone to hold those days.
But as a student, I mean, obviously, we, like.
All right, any thoughts, any other thoughts on this walkthrough agenda? Yes, ma'am?
Just a question.
Yeah.
When are references being checked?
Glenn is supposed to be doing that.
That's going to be part of our Monday discussion, I think.
Just because it's Monday, to then Wednesday having a finalist come. So I guess that's something for the committee to consider, because.
Yeah, everything's gotten kind of compressed.
Yeah.
We may not make a decision on the 22nd. If there's still.
All right, that's all, I just wanted to bring that piece up.
No. And Kathy and I, I guess I had to discuss that. We don't necess, we'll do the interview, if the committee's ready to move forward, we can, if not, it'll be in February.
Call a special meeting or.
Yeah.
Whatever the case.
Yeah, because I will not be surprised if we don't have to have a meeting on the budget in February, so.
Wait, one more.
Yeah.
Does it make sense, I know you don't have your whole team there, but for Ms. Menetski to put out an email to the five of you holding some dates for your vote in case you can't do it on the 22nd, so that you're not behind, 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 you actually have some preventative plans, contingency.
Thank you for that foresight. I would say yes, Mr. Chair, that sounds like a wonderful idea, and I would recommend that we do that.
Sounds like it.
I would.
Even late January?
Yeah, late January, yeah.
I don't think you want to hold too long if you don't have.
And if we have to do it on Saturday, we zoom on a Saturday, like, I'm.
I'm not, I'm not against that either.
I'm just saying, put all options on the table.
Let's shoot for the 29th, that's a week later.
Okay. That's, yes.
Student advisory meeting?
Yeah.
I suppose we can vote during that, actually.
That would be a good, yes.
Well, some are like, you want to talk about the needs of the head, it's like, even, that's confidentiality.
Well, no, but it's.
Well, once it is final stage, you're not, you're already meeting.
No, because we, we have to deliberate in public. Sorry.
With, that is a public meeting, though, so.
Yeah, that's what he's saying.
So that would work.
That would work. I, I would say we make the vote the 29th officially, but that way, but, I don't know, but it's just a thought. Unless the student advisory committee would like to, but that, I feel like, would not work.
I feel like that would work.
Yeah. To get everybody to switch their dates.
Together. Because I want to have meetings, but that's.
Pretend I said nothing.
So, well, I guess, so.
Don't worry about it, Tom.
No, 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 don't, don't.
We got it sorted, we're sorted, we're good.
So are we looking for the 29th? Okay. Plan. All right.
I guess, yes, I guess it.
Sherry will send out a notice and see if we can.
Make sure we get all five of us on the 29th, if needed.
If needed. Okay. All right. So I guess, well, we'll have to figure out the logistical issues. But based on kind of the schedules, there's, you know, probably an opportunity for, if you want to meet them when they first get here, but not, I don't want us, I don't think the committee should take away from the opportunity for them to interact with Central Office.
I also worry that if the entire committee is there, or a quorum of the committee is there, that it might be intimidating. I mean, theoretically, there are already meeting two of us during the interviews. I, I personally, as much as I would like to be there, to be like, that additional phase of, yep, I met you here, now let me walk you here, another part of me is also saying, I would defer to those who are not on the search committee to walk them through, just to give them a chance to interact, because we have interacted with them once prior. I just worry about, I don't, I don't want it to be like, oh, the whole school, my interview started now, you know, kind of, I don't, I don't want that mentality. I want them to be at ease and feel like they can be themselves and interact in an honest and meaningful way during the walkthrough, as opposed to feeling like they need to be performing because a majority of the school committee is present and observing them. You know what I mean? I, that's my only pushback on having more than two people of the committee be at the walkthroughs. I, I kind of feel strongly about it, because I feel like, yes, we are the be all and end all, yes, we should be looking very closely at these people, but I also feel we need to put some trust and faith into the group that has been searching, because personally, I feel that this, that the search committee has been doing very good and thoughtful work in, in what we've been doing to date. So, and I guess, I just don't want these candidates, when they get to that finalist stage, to be like, okay, I've got to be performing on that day, and be on, like, I want them to be, like, at ease, so they're able to kind of digest what they're going to be stepping into.
But with that being said, I feel that I want to see the way that person interacts with the administration and with the staff and that stuff. In front of us, not for nothing, in front of us, they're all prim and proper, they're, you know what I'm saying?
Some were, I mean, you never know if they're going to show up in an interview, honestly.
So they're supposed to present themselves as professional, where, as they're walking around the school and they're talking to the different staff and they're talking, they kind of like, relax a little bit, let your hair down type of thing. I want to see how our finalists are interacting with the staff, because not for nothing.
I'm still going to push back on that, Kelly, I feel like, I, I understand what you're saying, and I, I agree. As a committee choosing the most important position in our district and appointing that person as the head, I just, I feel like too many of the committee members at that walkthrough is going to be intimidating. And I feel that it is going to, you know, again, they've already sat in front of a committee of 13 people who have questioned and grilled them for an hour, an hour and 15 minutes, I think was our longest one on Monday night. I, I guess I just feel like, the walkthrough isn't about us as much as it's about the administrators and the administrators knowing that they can give us their feedback, I guess, is kind of where I'm at with it personally. I don't know if Hope's got her hands.
Sorry, I'm like, so.
She's like jumping out of her seat.
Because I'm not leaving, apparently. That's a recommendation, because I think, Kelly, what you're concerned with is that you want to see, it sounds like, what I'm hearing from you, is you want to see all sides of them before you make a vote, and I get that. The way that we do it typically with other positions, like a principal or whatever, is that there's a Google form then, that anyone who does interact with the candidate fills out and goes to you, so you get their feedback. And that way, because what Kathy's point, it sounds like what I'm hearing from her, is that it's not about you guys in that moment, it's about getting the input from the teachers and the students and the parents and the folks that show up. So I would encourage you, I didn't hear anything in your master plan, about a feedback loop.
No, that's a good point.
To put in, I have ones that we did with the Quashnet principal that are, I think, pretty good, and I'd be happy to share with the committee if that would be helpful, so, because I'll stop.
So I think, you know, once the committee meets with them and they're interacting with each of the building superintendents, or principals, I'm elevating everyone to superintendent now, you're God, so. Can't be any higher than that. Having a Google form to get that feedback would be great, I think that.
Anonymous.
That's a great, a great thought, didn't think of that.
And it would go to all five of us, so we all have the same interaction and thoughts and.
Yeah, it would get shared universally for each candidate, no problem. I, I think that's a great idea. I think, once the committee members meet with them and they're interacting with those groups, I don't know that the, the school committee needs to be part of that interaction.
Not to mention, they're going to, like, the other point is, they're going to be sitting in the hot seat for an hour plus during our questions, and I think our questions are going to be even more in-depth than, so brace yourself for those nights of the finalist interviews, they might be a little bit more in-depth than what the search, I mean, the search committees have been in-depth. I think us and our job as school committee is to really drill even deeper. And I, I think if we're with them all day, I, I just, I feel like that's going to hit like, a level of, I don't feel comfortable with it, I guess, is what I'm saying, my gut is saying, do not do that. Like, it's, it's just not, I don't feel it's fair, I guess.
Because I'm expecting, if you're a candidate, that you're gathering and giving information in those walkthroughs, right? You're, because, one, you, what is the real issues going on? What are people's concerns, what's the staff's concerns, what's the, you know, parents and students? You know, they're going to hear ours, for sure, but they are trying to prep themselves for that interview that night. And, you know, they don't have access to that information until that day. So I think we would, to Kathy's point, I think it would impede upon their ability to have their best put forward for us and give each of them an equal opportunity to meet with us. And then, you know, the, the meetings start at 6:30, they get done when they get done. I did not put an end date, there is no time limit. So if we have a thousand questions, we have a thousand questions. But it, it's an open-ended, you know, take it to where you need it to go, so that you feel comfortable, that you understand the candidate, their capabilities, and what you feel that they can bring to Mashpee.
So is there really a need, then, for any of us to do a walkthrough with them?
There should be some representation, I feel, but I don't feel it should be more than two. I think just. I think just the chair personally even is perfect, but if somebody was interested in going with the chair, like I said, you and I will have met with all of that, like, we will have already interacted with them. But if Brian or Dan wanted to go with Dawn.
Well, I guess, when you say walkthrough, I'm only thinking from an introduction standpoint. Not escorting them to each of these.
So like you guys, like, you, Dawn, as the chair, would, would meet them here at the Central Office at 12 o'clock, introduce yourself.
And pass them off.
And then pass them off, and then you would be done until whatever time.
That's a good question, then. So who's going to pass them off? So then it's on Principal Brady to pass them off to Principal of Ryan?
Well, that, it's either.
Or is it, is Glenn coming for the meantime?
Glenn will be here for the whole thing.
Yeah, Glenn.
So Glenn would pass them off.
Glenn would basically escort him from one place to the next, because he's an, you know, an independent arbitrator.
Right, okay.
Kathy Collaborative, their facilitator.
Yeah.
Was the one who, she didn't drive me around, because they were two happening on the same day, so the chair did, but she, that's their job, is to get them from point A to this point.
Okay.
Yeah. And once we finalize it, then I will finalize it with Glenn.
Okay.
So that he knows what, what the expectation is.
So would we, as the school committee, just look like, we, as the school committee, and I don't want to make it any longer than it needs to be, would we expect for us to be, all of us to be at public forum at 4:10?
No.
We all wouldn't show up until 6:30?
Correct.
5:30.
Oh, 5:30.
Yeah, we wouldn't show up until our meeting starts.
Right, if, if it's, if the only meeting is the interview, you show up for 6:30.
And again, if that Google form is provided to people who are at public forum as well, that gives the public their chance to also provide feedback to us on their thoughts. And to Eve's point, you know, I'm sitting here thinking, you know, I do feel strongly that student representation needs to be in the, needs tours, so whether at the school, if it's the Student Advisory Committee to the school committee, at Quashnet, maybe it's their student.
Council.
Council.
Yeah.
At KCC, you're talking second graders, I don't know how it affects, but maybe they should have a couple of the kids come out and meet the finalists as well.
Yeah.
Just meet them, not, but not in the same capacity as, say, the Student Advisory Committee or that the Student Council would interact with the candidate during the walkthrough.
Right.
But I do think, you know, if you had a second grader, be like, this is where second grade is, kind of thing, or this is my music room, or whatever, you know. That, I think, would include the students, because I do feel strongly that we need to hear from the students on this as much as we need to hear from faculty, staff, and the public, so.
No.
I mean, and then I'm just looking at a type, so if we're going to give, we're going to give the people a for, a Google form to fill out.
Yep.
Like, that's a short amount of time for, for them to fill it out and us to get it, before we interview the candidate.
We don't necessarily need it before we interview them, we could, you could.
We just need it before we vote.
We vote, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. That's just another data point for the committee members to make their decision on.
And I would like to walk through the school with the candidate, just because I don't know how much I'm going to be here for the interview. And I personally, interviews can go our way, and I would really like to spend the time actually talking to the candidate just casually. So tell me about yourself over and walk me through it, because I feel like personally, the way my brain works is I do better learning around a person in a casual setting rather than.
And if you can't make it to these interviews, could you make sure that another student advisory, could you send someone as,
Yeah, oh.
like, your vice or whatever, or somebody from the committee is at this table representing the Student Advisory Committee?
All right, so would we defer to the building principals then to arrange, well, to determine what the tour of their building and their student population would entail?
Yes, they have autonomy over their building. I would assume that.
Okay.
They would want to have a say in how they bring a candidate around. And it would just make sense, because they're going to know the flow of that day and what's going on where and when and.
Yeah.
So Principal Brady's not here tonight, but we can obviously convey to her the.
That she'll be site one?
Well.
I mean, obviously, that could be.
No, I.
Part of me almost feels like that should, well, no, because we want them to see students, no matter.
Yes, we can communicate from our office, whatever your expectations are, two minutes.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of.
Yes, we can absolutely facilitate that between Ms. Minsky, me, Loops, Ms. Messina, all of us in our office are able to.
I'm sure if we even told Glenn, like, I'm sure he could also help facilitate that in his role as.
That's a, yes, that's doable.
Yeah, okay. Do the timeframes then seem workable?
I worry about the dismissal time for the meeting, but.
About the what?
The dismissal time, but, I mean.
Well, if we change it to 3:00 to 3:30, I'll have to kind of back the times up a little bit.
I would change, this is just my opinion.
Maybe Central Office.
I would change, do you think, 45 minutes? I mean.
That does feel like.
That feels like a long time.
We can change it to half an hour.
Yeah.
The high school can be done in 30, 45 minutes.
I was going to say, I don't.
It takes me two minutes to walk me to the high school.
You're going to run them around?
Yeah.
So if we do 12:00 to 12:30 at Central Office.
Yep.
And then we do 12:45 to 1:45.
Yep.
At the high school, and then 2:00 to 2:45, I don't think it's going to take that long, at Coombs.
Yep.
And then 2:45 to.
We're going to give travel time, so.
From Coombs to Quashnet?
Oh, sorry.
Two, well, so we'll do.
45 minutes.
Yeah, so 2:50 to.
Just make it 2:40 and then 2:45.
Yeah, 2:45, okay, yeah, we could do it that way.
2:45 to 3:30.
No, 3:20, I would say 3:25.
People start lining up at 3:00, so honestly.
Okay, so 3:20?
Yeah, I would say that. And then if they're still here at 3:30 and they're not getting in their cars and running away, then, you know, hopefully.
All right, so then do we.
No, what is helpful for the discussion, like, are you having site sometimes, so.
I'm just looking at.
No, sorry.
There's an LPAC meeting here in the library at 11 o'clock on the 15th.
What's this, the 16th?
The 15th?
The 16th is the winter chorus concert at the high school. There's also National Honor Society induction here at Quashnet School. committee meeting on Thursday.
All right, right.
Is the LPAC in this, in the library, is it able to be moved?
We can move, yes.
So LPAC can be moved. The chorus concert, unfortunately, I don't think we can avoid that, we've got to get these done, unfortunately. No, I, no, I appreciate that. No, I, that's why I was, I heard you saying something about it, and I, that's why I needed to hear what you were saying.
Well, what about the Elementary Honor Society?
Is it 5:30, 6:30 here at Quashnet?
But the interviews are starting at 6:30, so.
Yeah, but it's in the, it's in the library.
Oh, no, they're in the cafeteria.
It's in the cafeteria, okay.
The cafeteria.
Well, not for, not for nothing, my son has received an invitation to the National Elementary Junior. So I can't be here for 5:30. I wouldn't be here until 6:30.
Well, the interviews don't start on that day.
But a meeting starts at 5:30.
On the 16th, no. The 22nd, the meeting starts at 5:30.
Yeah, that's the only one that.
That's the only one, yeah, but we have the meeting before.
Okay.
It's just the 16th that.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Should I, should I throw a wrench in it while we're.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, you're almost done, yeah.
Don't trip me.
You could, with some flopping around and a little time, you could actually do two in one day.
That's what the Collaborative did.
It would make more sense, I think.
Yeah, instead of three different days and then.
Well, it's kind of hesitant to do that.
Because Glenn's taking them to dinner. Do we want them all sitting at the dinner table together?
Well, I mean, Glenn's pretty skinny, he could probably do two dinners.
Again, at that point, they're all, it's not confidential anymore.
But no, I don't want to go to dinner.
Yeah, they don't want to go to dinner.
They don't want to go to dinner, Kelly, you're right.
But you could, but, but you could have, you know, someone else taking them.
The chair could take them or Ashley could go out to dinner.
Right, so I, you know, so I think that if you, my concern is with the ti, with the tight, you know, timeframe, if you have someone that has a.
Yes.
Has a, you could have someone show up at 11:30, for instance, and have them start and.
Stagger.
And then go in the opposite direction, so you're going counterclockwise, if you will, so.
I was, I'm just hesitant, because then that means that we have to do two interviews that night.
Yeah.
And if we're not starting till 6:30, at a conservative basis, we're looking at 7:30 potentially, with a little bit of a break. So you're starting at quarter till 8?
No, no.
I just.
We're keeping, we're keeping Eve up way past her bedtime for enough nights in the past couple. What do you think, Kathy?
Yeah. I mean, two interviews, the only problem is, to Dawn's point about the no time limit for us to question, you would have to lose that, because you could theoretically do like an hour, but again, if it's 6:30, even if you did an hour and a half, it does get late.
And not, and to Sherry's point, if you look at the 16th, we have, we have the Policy Subcommittee meeting.
Yeah, but.
Then we have, then we have, you know, stuff after that, all the stuff that's going on. I mean, is the six, I know we said these dates, but we also said that, you know, there's going to have to be some wiggle room because of other stuff that's going on.
I think the policy should get moved. I do, I think, I know we have to do all this stuff and I get it, but I think you have to prioritize this.
This has to be priority one, I agree.
I keep talking, it's not my job.
No, but you're not wrong. This is, we need this settled. We need to put someone permanently in so that we can then begin to fill the system, the special ed, the, all of the other things, so I guess I'm just.
And there are other districts that are faster.
And also, the candidates might need to, depending on what their personal things going on, they may need to reply to other places as well. We don't know situations, we don't know anything.
But the flip side to that is the Policy Subcommittee has to come up with a policy for graduation requirements for the student that's a senior.
We're not saying we're going to put it.
But the way that, I mean, I think we've pushed the Policy Subcommittee already three or four times, because people couldn't make it.
We have.
Yeah.
I, I think we still can find a spot.
That day.
For that day.
Yeah.
On Zoom.
Yeah, there should be time.
I just, again, not, but.
I just know it was very tough for us to all to agree to the 16th, for the Policy Subcommittee meeting. We went back and forth for, for weeks.
What time is it scheduled on the 16th?
4:15.
4:15?
4:15. On the 16th.
So why can't it be? I, I don't, I don't understand what the issue is.
No, it can, but to what Sherry was saying, there's a lot of stuff going on that day.
Okay. There's a lot of stuff going on every day, so.
I hadn't noticed.
Right? I, I mean, to Kathy's point, we really need to get this done sooner versus later. Not only to know which direction our ship is sailing, but there are a lot of competing sharks out there in the water that could take what we want, right? And so we need to be moving forward as expeditiously as possible. Now, there's still unknowns. We don't even know who the candidates are. We don't even know for sure that they're going to be able to make those dates, but until Monday, we, you know.
We won't know.
We won't know, right? And, you know, just like they have been told, you have been told, these are the tentative dates.
So the tentative dates are the 16th, 17th, and 22nd?
Now, yes.
But you could, you could double up.
That's what I thought was two.
I'm really confused. So we got the 15th, the 16th, and the 22nd?
Correct.
Okay.
The 15th?
Yeah.
The 16th? Okay.
I thought it was the 21st, not the 22nd.
The 15th, we're going to move the LPAC meeting to another room.
That's fine, we can do.
And that's fine. And then.
You said the 16th, the.
The 16th.
The NH, that's in the cafeteria?
And, yes, they.
So on the 15th and 16th, I just need to know what time do I need to reserve the library for, this library, I'm imagining.
4:00.
Yep, 4:00.
Till the rest of the evening, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, 4:00 on. And that would be also for the 22nd.
That's something to reserve for that.
From 4:00, though?
And am I postponing and rescheduling the.
No, no.
No, that stays.
We'll leave it.
Yeah, because we wouldn't need to be in public forums for.
Right.
And I just want to know what to do. Am I reaching out, are you reaching out to principals from, is Glenn, is that?
I'll do the, I'll do the.
Because you're.
I am out on my own.
Yeah. So I will reach out to Glenn, go through the updated schedule, and then I will send that to everyone, including Dr. Hanson. Okay? Well, that was fast. All right. I emailed you guys, but I also printed off a copy for you. You need a copy? Okay, so I.
Is this our 47 questions?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, this is.
I don't need that.
I was going to say, you should know what that is.
No, sorry.
Okay. But I did email everyone a copy of that, so those are the original continuum of questions that the Search Advisory Committee had come up with, along with MASC's Superintendent Search Question Guide. So you all have that, and Eve, you did not get that, so.
You didn't share with her?
She has them all. It's, it's all our stuff that we.
Oh, okay.
She's got, yeah, she's got all that stuff.
Okay. All right. In regard to, because our Q and A period is somewhat open-ended and we are not planning to share questions with the candidates in advance, I think it would behoove each of us to come up with about a half a dozen questions, just in case one of your questions is asked by somebody else, okay? And we'll take it from there. So if you have any questions, let me know on that. Looked at this. Is there anything else that we need to cover at this point on that? Okay, next is an appointment, and I will turn it back to Superintendent Thompson.
Yes, thank you. So we have completed our search for the tough job of trying to replace Dr. Hanscom, but we are pleased to have selected Dr. Pam Gould. Dr. Gould is recently retired as the Sandwich Superintendent. Previous to that, she was Assistant Superintendent in the Plymouth Public Schools. She brings a wealth of experience and skill to the position. She would be able to, to step in. I did share some of the contract discussions with.
I did share some of the contract discussions with, with the committee. She would be a daily employee so that she would be paid for the days that she works. She is retired, she does not need vacation or health benefits and that sort of thing, kind of similar to the interim high school principal last year. And the plan is to have her start so that she and Hope have some overlap next week as next week is Hope's, Hope's last week and have her start in earnest on the 21st, which is right after Martin Luther King Day, so there would be no gap, so. Looking for approval of my recommendation from the committee.
I have a motion to approve the appointment of Dr. Gould as the interim assistant superintendent.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Kathy?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And yes. All right, look forward to having her here.
Thank you.
She's got big shoes to fill.
Oh, I keep saying, Dr. Gould is the better version of me. She, everybody, she, she is very, very good, so I'm very happy with this call.
Yep.
It's the end of the agenda.
Oh. Make a motion to adjourn.
We're going to do the items the chair didn't recognize first. I hear you, Kathy.
Well, I was planning to have an executive session, but...
To make the agenda, so.
It didn't make, it didn't obviously make the agenda.
Oh, that's what she was saying, ooh, ooh, ooh.
Yeah, I know.
Ooh, 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 it's, it's getting late.
But I turned it over, I didn't see it, so, that, that's fine, it, it can wait until...
Another day.
Want to do it after?
We'll probably do it after one of the interview sessions.
Interviews, that works.
And hopefully it won't be that long. All right, I have a motion to adjourn by Kathy and Kelly.
I will second.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.